Good evening and welcome. I call the meeting to order. This is a special meeting. And we're here tonight to learn from different perspectives on the IBN process, but we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we have role call? And we'll start with Mr. Sharkey and go around.
Mike Sharkey.
Amy Carney.
Karen Warner.
Matthew Patinsky.
And Donna Lewis. Thank you. I need a board approval for the agenda. I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you. And Dr. Menzel, would you give us your comments before we get into our agenda item?
Well, good evening, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, members of the governing board, and our guests who are here this evening. I have a few things just to highlight as celebrations and a word of appreciation. First, we've had some extraordinary news coverage of the EBIT Fire Science Program here at Coronado High School, both on Fox News as well as K T A R. Our students really rose to the occasion. They shined in the interviews, and it was a fantastic celebration of a program that's just gaining a lot of traction. We appreciate the partnership with Scottsdale Fire as well as the Charo support, and so it's off and running, a really positive thing to celebrate. Secondly, on September 20th, we held our fourth annual College and Career Fair. And as the board knows, when I sent out the information, the library, the way that they track foot traffic, they estimated close to 2,000 individuals higher than what their normal foot traffic is on that day. So more than 100 colleges, universities, trade schools, as well as employers were present to provide information to students and their parents, and that was a fantastic event. Appreciate our CTE team that put it together, as well as the partnership with the Scottsdale Civic Library, Civic Center Library. Those partnerships are really critical. The third thing is that today is the 40th day. And that means the enrollment numbers that we have today are the numbers that will help inform our planning for the 26, '27 school year. So Dr. Bachner has provided that information to you in a separate email, but those are the numbers that really launch HR and the finance team in terms of our planning for next year. And then finally, I want to give a shout out to our facilities team, to all of the people who had to respond on Friday to the unprecedented weather event. It's interesting, when you're from the Midwest, you have weather all the time. When you're in Arizona, weather is really a news story. And the amount of rain that we had and the challenges that we had to navigate with respect to lightning, with respect to flooding, with respect to leaks that we didn't know that we had, including in an IT room with major servers, people responded very quickly. So I just want to give a shout out to all of those who were part of being in a position to ensure the safety and well-being of our students, as well as take care of our physical assets. And with that, that will conclude my report this evening.
All right, we're going to move into an information discussion item, and with three new board members, interest-based negotiation deserves a good kind of overview and warrants a description. So we'll begin with that, but I want the board to be thinking in terms of macro thoughts relative to the budget as this influences the many priorities we will later discuss. Dr. Menzel.
So we have a brief presentation, and then we're going to do something that's a first for Scottsdale Unified School District. And I appreciate the openness of the governing board and actually the willingness to sit down and have a direct conversation in a format like this, to be able to hear directly from our associations with respect to their interests. The slide deck that we're going to be reviewing this evening is one prepared by Alexis Wilson. She's been working with us for the last two years, did a similar training with the same content with each of the associations and the district's bargaining team. So that we're all operating with a common understanding with respect to what interest-based negotiations are. And so it's really focused on identifying not positions but on interests. And when you think about why it's important, in a historical approach to bargaining, each side has positions, and then they fight until there's a winner and a loser. And in that environment, you can often have fractured relationships, which is not healthy for an organization. It may have been effective at some point in time in the past, but from a practical perspective, when we are on one team, not on separate teams, serving the interests of our students in the district, implementing an interest-based negotiating process reinforces the fact that we're on the same team. We need to get beneath the positions and to the core interests that each of the organizations, associations have with respect to where we are as a district. So when you think about focusing on interests, not positions, we separate people from the problem. We generate options for mutual gain, and we use objective criteria to evaluate those. This is not something that's new. This is implemented across all sorts of industry sectors, even in international diplomacy. And it really helps get to mutually beneficial agreements instead of winners and losers. When you think about steps in the IBN process, we'll start in the upper left-hand corner. We prepare by understanding interest and goals, and part of our training really helped identify what is the difference between an interest and a position, and how we think about zero-sum game versus maybe creative solutions to address what the interests are. And it allows for organic solutions to surface in ways that might not have been anticipated. Then we move into the exploration phase, discussing those interests and generating options. Once those options have been generated, we work to reach agreement that satisfy the interests of the parties at the table. Then those are objectively evaluated until we reach consensus. Once we've reached consensus, then that gets incorporated into the agreements that come to the governing board for approval. And then it's incumbent on us to implement based on the agreements that were made, and then this process starts over every year. So the components start with issue identification. What's the problem that we're trying to solve? And then we want to get underneath that problem of practice to understand what the interests are. What is it that the parties care about? What is the concern? What's motivating that interest, and how might we be able to address it? Then we look at all possible solutions, and on the next slide, we'll get to the next two slides. One of the important things for us is that we don't say no to any possible solution on the front end, right? We want all those ideas to land on the table. They'll be critically evaluated, but we want to create an openness to different ways of approaching a challenge. Then evaluate the options with objective criteria and standards that are mutually developed. These are not imposed by the district. They're agreed upon by the associations and the district at the table. Then we select a solution from those options that meet the criteria, and then work to a decision that everyone can support. So if you were going to take a position, it would be looking at the what. And it's really focused on a fixed idea position. We want a 5% increase, period. Versus talking about an interest, and the interest is to provide competitive compensation so that we can attract and retain top talent in the district. So you reframe the conversation from a position to an interest, and then you have discussions about how best to achieve and accomplish those interests. The interests really get to the why, so move beyond the what to the why of the conversation. When we think about that, we have questions, prompts, that help us really dig beneath the initial ideas that have been identified to, why do we want to resolve this problem, or what do the parties care about? What is at the heart of the matter, and why do the parties believe a change is even necessary? How would that help you? How would that help the group? How would that help the district, and why is it important? So when we look at those options, we want to brainstorm all possible solutions. And one of the fundamental rules is that no one can say no to a solution that's placed on the table. We want to really, there we go. We really want to make sure that we honor the voices of all the parties that are at the table. And there are a couple of examples here that Alexis provided. So Taylor's position is we need to go hiking. That's a position. The interest is fresh air and health, you know, in this example. Or Morgan's position might be we need to go see a movie. The interests are relaxing and not feeling too tired. When we did a hypothetical exercise, our job was to figure out how can you take the interests of Taylor and Morgan and identify options for how we might be able to accomplish both. And there's a video that Alexis shows where you've got one orange and two different people vying for that orange. And so the first solution to the orange problem was to cut it in half. So one person got half an orange, the other person got half an orange. But when you dig a little bit deeper, you found that one person needed the rind and the other person needed the juice. You didn't really need to cut the orange in half. There was a way to make use of the whole orange without anyone being diminished in the process. So by focusing on interest, we don't jump to conclusions that might not really be in the best interest of all the parties. The evaluation criteria are really, really important, and these are ones that were in place last year, at least largely in place last year. And we start by aligning to student outcomes. At the end of the day, we're here in order to ensure our students are successful. So we want to make sure that their interests are held at the core. We want to ensure that any recommended agreement is legal, timely, ratifiable, acceptable to the members, something that can be implemented and is safe, supports the district's vision, mission, and values, and is fiscally responsible, both short and long term. And so every option, once we've identified those options, gets evaluated using this type of template. And then after we've gone through all those steps in the process, we use a very technical process using the thumb. And a thumbs up indicates full support. Sideways indicates that a participant might not love the option but can live with it and get behind it. And a thumbs down is not a veto, but a thumbs down is an opportunity to say, wait, I have more questions, or I'm not quite ready to get to here or here. And so the process doesn't move forward until we've addressed those concerns. And so the goal is ultimately to either get all thumbs up or thumbs sideways before we move forward. So consensus is designed to, after we've objectively evaluated the ideas that are on the table, reach agreement with each of the associations and the district. The process can take a long time. And one of the things that we've found over the past few years is that it's really important to have a third-party facilitator. We've had that for the last four years. Alexis helped us last year. And there was agreement with all of the associations that she was a trusted third party to be able to facilitate and keep the process moving in a way that ensured that we were honoring the commitments of IBN. So this evening, we have an opportunity to do something that isn't typical in other districts as well, and that is to have an open conversation with each of the four associations that the board has recognized. They'll come up one at a time to share what their interests are. They'll likely identify what some of those priorities are, recognizing that there are resource limitations so that we can't do everything that everybody would like. But it's really important for you to hear directly from them what the interests are that have surfaced from their members. After they go through their list, it'll be an opportunity for you to ask clarifying questions so that you can get underneath some of the things, particularly seek clarification if something was confusing. And we'll do that for all four. And that will then help inform the board's conversation about the board's interests as well as we move into the executive session portion of the meeting. Any questions before we invite the Scottsdale Education Association representatives to the table?
Who communicates our interests back to those associations?
So that will be through the management team. So as we have our executive session and those interests are clear, the management team will then convey that as we move back to the table.
Who's the management team?
So the management team, there are a lot of people who are on different teams, but it would be the core team. Shannon, Heather, and I will be the three people who are conveying that. All right, I would like to invite TJ and Whitney. And why am I drawing a blank on your name? And I know your name.
Angela.
Thank you, Angela. So I'm looking forward to engaging in the conversation. Welcome.
Sorry, is that the, that is. I got it. Nice. Good evening, President Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, governing board members, Superintendent Dr. Menzel, Gladys, and guests. I am TJ Buckley, President of Scottsdale Education Association and proud teacher at Mountainside Middle School. With me tonight, also representing SCA, are Whitney Keeler, Vice President and Hopi Elementary School teacher, and Angela Lucero, SCA IBN Middle School representative and teacher at Ingleside Middle School. So a little bit about us. To begin, SCA is the sole representative body of the Certified Staff of SUSD. We represent 1,398 staff members. Our representative body includes all teachers, counselors, nurses, social workers, and special service providers, which include speech-language pathologists and occupational and physical therapists. We appreciate the opportunity to discuss our collective interests with you in this public forum. We are advocates for transparency throughout the process and intend to work closely with you throughout this process and all other processes that affect our members. We requested this meeting with you in April after pausing negotiations due to various process issues. We are proud to report that those issues have been worked out, and we are hopeful that this will lead to many positive changes for all employees. In preparation of our annual negotiations process, we surveyed certified staff on six interests that were identified through leadership meetings and conversations with certified staff members from all SUSD work sites. Through the survey and further conversations, we have narrowed our focus of the year on four main interests, which are fair compensation and benefits, safe and secure environments, workload manageability, and job security. The survey was conducted from September 10th to September 24th. We had 470 responses, which included many responses from each site and employee subgroup to ensure representation for all. Through the survey, we were able to collect 2,400 unique responses from staff on open-ended questions for a total of 153 pages of written feedback on our interests. We find that in these times of uncertainty with stagnant wages, rising costs of insurance, site repurposing, and the ever-present enrollment numbers, that people get separated into groups and reduced to numbers. However, we must remind ourselves and others that we are people doing this difficult work. For that purpose, we will make a quick mention of some of the figures that we found, but then we will dedicate the majority of our time to sharing the diverse perspectives of our certified staff. To begin, fair compensation and benefits. 71% of staff indicated that they do not feel financially secure as an SUSD employee. 56% of staff indicated their selected health insurance plan does not adequately cover them or them and their families. 34% of staff indicated that they are highly likely or likely to leave the district if the recent compensation and benefits trend continues. 39% of employees remained neutral on the topic. Staff were asked to respond to the following prompts. Please explain how your SUSD compensation package affects your well-being, and how does the cost of insurance affect your professional well-being. Their responses included.
I have been teaching 10 years and do not feel like I will ever be able to afford a home near where I teach.
I have been in education for 29 years and still don't make $75,000 a year. The average salary for educators working 20-plus years is $86,000 a year.
One paycheck barely covers rent. I cannot afford any surprise expenses and things come up in life. I barely have any savings. I think I have $50 in my savings right now. I am turning 39 and have never been able to afford a home because I can't ever get enough for a down payment. I can't enjoy life after working so hard. I need to keep all of my money for necessities. I've been thinking about getting a second job, but that just sounds so daunting. I went to college, got a proper degree, and should be paid a living wage that can support more than one person.
I've been teaching in SUSD for 28 years, have two degrees, two endorsements, et cetera, and still have to have a second job to cover my family's expenses. It's not sustainable.
I live paycheck to paycheck. If I have a financial emergency, my only option is credit cards.
I have required to work two jobs to pay for my bills. This leaves me burned out and more likely to get sick, which in turn costs the district money to cover with us up.
I do spend mental and emotional energy thinking about and worrying about how to stretch every dollar.
I barely make ends meet. I'm a single mom and have zero extra funds to provide extracurricular activities for my daughter.
I have to decide if I will take care of my health and if I can afford healthcare. Also not able to retire.
Always stressed about money, considering taking a second job.
I cannot afford SUSD healthcare.
I pay $27,000 a year on healthcare.
The insurance is not covering a surgery I need.
Way too costly. I don't address some health issues because of cost.
I try not to go to the doctors.
I take home $700 a year because, or a week, I'm sorry, because I pay for my son and myself on insurance.
Need to prioritize healthcare procedures over paying my bills.
Majority of my salary goes to insurance.
Benefits should be the number one priority for SCA right now.
I'm scared to get sick.
So now moving to our second interest, safe and secure environment. 12% of staff indicated they do not feel safe and secure in their working environments. 82% indicated feeling valued and respected by site admin. 69% feeling valued and respected by parents and guardians. 49% Forty-nine percent feeling harassed, oh, sorry, have indicated feeling valued and respected by Scottsdale community. Forty-eight percent indicated feeling valued and respected by district administration. Nine percent indicated feeling harassed or intimidated by a colleague in the last year. Thirteen percent indicated feeling harassed or intimidated by an administrator within the last year. Eighteen percent indicated feeling harassed or intimidated by a student within the last year. And twenty-six percent of staff indicated feeling harassed or intimidated by a parent within the last school year. Then we asked, we posed the question to staff, what is one improvement that would make you feel more secure in your working environment? And their answers included:
We need a commitment from the district to back teachers more in interactions with parents and students. The district also needs to create language and writing to ensure teacher safety from harassment and intimidation. Because of the push for enrollment, the district and admin seem to take the side of the parent and the student more and more.
Professional autonomy, discretion, respect, and trust.
Clear boundaries in place for parents to not verbally abuse any staff member, including office and admin.
Students respecting all teachers on campus, even if they don't have you as a teacher.
Respect for our profession from the community around us.
Taking student violence and aggression more seriously with actual consequences.
More focus on mental health in our schools and communities.
Clear lines of what harassment by parents looks like.
Sites following through to prevent parents from just showing up in classrooms without a scheduled visit.
Teachers' rights should be heard equally as parents. I understand that the parent is the customer, but without good teachers, there is no school.
Moving to our third interest of workload manageability. Twenty-six percent indicated the number of student contacts per day has the biggest impact on their workload. Nineteen percent indicated additional trainings has the biggest impact on their workload. Seventeen percent indicated the number of preps per day has the biggest impact on their workload. Sixty-five percent of staff indicated a positive personal morale or job satisfaction. Forty-eight percent of staff indicated a positive school-wide morale or job satisfaction. Sixty-one percent of staff indicated a high level of professional burnout. Twenty-five percent of staff feel professional development adequately prepares them to perform their professional duties. Sixty-nine percent of staff would like more diverse and individualized professional development opportunities. The questions posed to staff for this interest were, what is one improvement that would significantly impact your workload management? Please explain why you do or do not feel burned out, and what is one improvement you would like to see in professional development? And their responses included the following:
Better management of meetings.
Time on PD days to get my work done.
We have constant meetings scheduled before and after school with less than one week notice. It makes it very hard to plan and leads to rushing around and not feeling like I can get everything done.
Fewer fundamentals.
Not clustering a lot of meetings before and after school.
Our workloads and caseloads are so large, and each year these keep getting, keeping more. It's exhausting.
I am teaching four different subjects throughout the day without adequate time to plan for them unless I take work home at night, which I am not compensated for.
Last year, SEA fought on behalf of a science teacher to reduce the number of students in our classes. Because of that effort, my class size has become reduced, and the difference has been significant. I feel happier and my role and experience far less burnout. Most importantly, I am now able to provide my students with more individual attention, something that was nearly impossible in the past. Smaller class sizes have also greatly improved safety during labs, so I can now adequately monitor all students and ensure a safe learning environment, something that was a serious concern when classes were too large.
We need to stop saying we'll take things off teachers' plates and actually do it. If we can't compensate teachers fairly because of funding is lacking, then we need to start chopping away at the pointless tasks that teachers are asked to do.
I would like the individual choice for my PD, and so I can choose something relevant to my subject and certifications.
And moving to our fourth interest, job security and due process. Sixty-four percent of staff indicated they felt highly secure or secure in their job security. Twenty-five percent of staff remain neutral on their feeling of job security, with 11 percent of staff indicating that they feel highly not secure or not secure. Thirty-seven percent of indicated that the district enrollment trends most affect their perceived job security. Eleven percent indicated that staffing surplus most affected their perceived job security. And eight percent indicated that site repurposing most affects their perceived job security. Twenty-four percent indicated they would like to see the transfer policy improved to feel better about their job security. Thirty-six percent indicated they would like to see the evaluation system improved to feel better about their job security. Twenty-nine percent said they would like to see repurposing of sites or the communication of that improved to feel better about job security. Twenty-nine percent indicated that they would like to see the surplus policy improved. And thirty-three percent indicated that they would like to see the reduction enforced policy improved to feel better about their job security. Staff were asked the following questions. What input would you like our team, what input would you like to share with our team about job security? And the answers included the following:
I was surplus about a year and a half ago. Luckily, I was able to change positions and stay at my school. I may only have this year and possibly one more year before I am surplus again.
More sooner transparency about enrollment affecting shutdowns or combining. Teachers need time to plan and make long-term decisions rather than be forced into a corner.
My school will be repurposed. I have 24 years in the district, but only three in my teaching area. How will we be placed in the district? Seniority overall and in department?
I would like the district to be transparent in all aspects, be respectful of us all professionals and employees.
My position is funded by a grant through the state. That grant expires this year, and SUSD has to reapply. Social workers, counselors are left uncertain about whether they have a job for the next school year.
I would like an explicitly defined description of how a teacher's evaluation affects job security. I also would like a defined outline of all the factors that affect job security and how SUSD determines who they keep and who they let go.
As a special teacher, I get worried about the lack of funding and enrollment affecting my full-time status. I worry that, like my last district, my school will not be able to promise my position in the near future due to budget cuts.
There's a lot of concern among nurses that the district will restructure the school nurse staffing model and no longer staff an RN at each school.
I was told I may have to split schools due to enrollment last year, and then was told later enrollment was up and it would not happen. Really stressful and unnecessary to do this to employees. I considered leaving the district.
I think it makes everyone feel less secure in their job when we know two campuses are closing down. What is going to happen to the staff needs to be more transparent.
One thing I do want to make sure that I clarify, we did not change, some people may say that some of that language is a little harsh. And here's what I'll tell you, I did not change a single comment, because I will not censor our staff. I felt that that was inappropriate, so used the opportunity to share their direct words. As you can hear through the words of our certified staff, there are significant concerns around fair compensation and benefits, safe and secure environments, workload manageability, and job security. We are aware that the district will be looking to make significant changes to how we meet the needs of our community and specifically our students. The theme that we have noticed throughout this work is the interest or need for respect for staff members that continue to dedicate years of service to this district. We have been told for years that things will be taken off of our plates and that our time, expertise, and voices will be valued, and we feel that it's time for the district and community to follow through on those promises. Many staff members are living paycheck to paycheck and barely able to afford rent. Many will have no chance of buying a home within our community. Many already put in hours upon hours of work outside of their general workday and have difficulty spending time with their own children and loved ones. We have new fundamentals, new training, new resources, and new systems added to plates. We must do right by our workers and review all that we've been, that we've put on their plates. How many of these things were they consulted on? How many of the, how will they manage the continuous tasks that are put on their plates? How does the stress of these additional pieces and of these uncertain times affect them? While not all interest shared tonight will be met, we can address the needs of students and staff. We can achieve this by respecting the time, effort, and overall well-being of those you've been elected to lead. To some, SUSD may be a brand in need of resurgence and redesign. We and our students are more than a brand and more than numbers on a spreadsheet. We are people that are working as hard as we can to achieve the excellence that we've been called to. And with that, we're open to questions.
Donna? Thank you so very much for the work and the time that you put into developing the survey and gathering the data and having the incredible volume of responses. I'll turn it to the board before I ask my questions. Karen? I'm Dr. Ms. Wardner.
Thank you. Thank you for all that information. And would you email that to us?
Yes, I can email that. I was going to provide a copy, but I wasn't sure with open meeting laws, so yeah, I'll make sure I email it.
I'll provide a hard copy.
Thank you. I am so grateful that you're here and sharing the information today, because these are things that individuals have shared with me over the last almost three years. And to hear it from you as a collective and be able to see how dire this is and just the impact, and it's unacceptable, and we have to do better for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharkey?
Two questions. First one, apologies, I don't know what it means to be surplus. Can you explain to me?
Yeah, so surplus is when a staff member, so when we change our numbers for staff needs on a campus. So, for example, at Mountainside last year, we had four science teachers. This new year, we only needed three. So through attrition, we, like, they left, so we were fine. But sometimes, all four of those people, they don't resign, they don't retire, and then the district needs to place them in a job if they're going to extend them a contract. So a fourth teacher in that scenario would be moved from like a Mountainside to an Ingleside. And so that would be surplus of, we want to extend you a contract, you've done nothing wrong for your employment, and you deserve a contract, we just have to find you a new spot. And so there's, yeah.
And you, that teacher may or may not, depends on what's available?
Right. So then it becomes what's available, and then there's a process that human resources goes through along with site administrators to help, to help place those people. One thing that we've seen is, so you'll see like seniority at a site may be a thing. We also see like programmatic needs, and so that would be a gray area. And we just believe that with the movement of staff, the least amount of gray area that we can do is going to have the least amount of hurt feelings. So we want to make sure that that process is.
Thanks. And then, second question. In the safe and secure work environment, appreciate the comments about having teachers' backs. I heard the comment, you know, the, I understand the parent's, the customer, but the comment about administration not having teachers' backs, is that something you all collectively feel is endemic? As in, that is a part of the culture that is propagated from top down? Do you think it's sporadic? It's a person here, a person here, a school here, a school there? Trying to understand the root of administration needs to have our back. How widespread versus focused do you feel that is?
I would say, as somebody who gets called in on these advocacy calls, some of it is site-by-site. We do have some sites where there are very little issues with that. We do have a decent amount where that, you know, where that is a concern. And so I would say consistency overall. I think we have some great actors within the, you know, within the administration on that. But I think the need to grow that to a more consistent policy. Because then, what worries us, too, is the amount of things that don't get reported due to the perception of who has my back and who doesn't have my back. And so there's, there's different things like that.
So, thank you for that. So, I'm a believer in sort of, you know, culture flows from the top. What I'm hearing you say is, it's not necessarily that the culture from the top is, we have our teachers' backs or we don't. It's a lack of a position, which leaves it more sporadic at different areas. Is that a fair way to put it?
Yeah, but I also think that, and I look at the comment that talked about enrollment. The piece that enrollment plays, and I, one thing I will say, a message that we get from district leadership, is that enrollment, I mean, if you look at our WIGS for the upcoming year, for this year, it's math and it's enrollment. And so when the, really, one of the top two priorities is having people in seats and community buy-in, there becomes a just natural culture of, we have to keep people, as opposed to some accountability measures that may be more supportive, that would be more supportive of staff. And so I think we have a lot of non-reports due to that. That would be my, like, what do we need to fix?
What message coming down is, we want to have the enrollment, if that parent or whatever is, you know, doing something we don't agree with, I'm going to side with the parent because the enrollment is what counts more?
Right. And I would say, even like from a, you know, taking on a different hat, if you look at like a site administrator, if I'm a site administrator and I'm told that my school under 300, being under 300, is going to get repurposed, and now none of us are going to know where we're going to work next year, and I'm sitting at 296, or, you know, am I really pushing to move that, you know, to a better placement? Or am I really just wanting that child in the seats because I really need that 300 so that my school doesn't get repurposed?
Thank you very much.
Dr. Cruz, did you want to add anything on surplus, or are you good?
We certainly can send all of that information to the governing board, so you know exactly how surplus works, wherever you share that.
Dr. Potenski?
Thank you for a great presentation and the way that you combine kind of the quantitative and the qualitative really kind of helps hit home. Do we, did you ask similar questions last year or the year before? And to what extent can you help us understand any trends in the, you know, perspective of our certified staff on these issues? Are there different Big Four? Or are those stable? And then, kind of within the Big Four, does it shift around?
Right. So this is the first year that we use this survey. I do think that this will be the survey moving forward. Like, I think that we can consistently use this. I've used it in previous districts or a similar one, and used it to track trends. I will say that I do have access to previous years' surveys. And there does seem to be a shift in stability. People feel that there is more stability now as far as the district as a whole. It's just a matter of how does that affect me as the person? Is the part that is a district, we're still having trouble with, from my perspective?
As the target moves.
Right.
Well, Ms. Carney, did you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say thank you. Thank you for coming to the table and for all that you gave us. These are exactly things that I also have heard from teachers with having kids in the district for so long as I have. So, yeah, thank you for the conversation and know that we will be working our best to support you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I want to echo the shared value of the top four clear pieces you've brought to us. And there's no doubt, staff-wide, that this will be a shared value. I don't think there's anything any of us as former teachers or working with colleagues as teachers haven't felt, either by walking the walk, or feeling not enough time, or feeling overwhelmed, or feeling that meetings need to be more meaningful, or more individualized for what I want to be and do with my certification and time. So you've made your interests beautifully clear tonight. My highest compliment to you, and frankly, you may remember when I came to speak with you during the campaign, that you asked me specifically about the IBN process and how did I feel about the 1% to the 2%? And I guardedly said, honestly, I was concerned that it was a bypass of the process. Do you recall that?
I do.
And I thank you for your support, anyway. And I want to reiterate that, because this is the time, that the fact that you said that the process has been worked out and you're feeling good about it, and you feel trust in the process, can I just get a for-sure yes, you feel trust in the IBN process?
Yes.
I really want to tell you how much that means to me when I need to lean on that process on behalf of all. And, and thank you. I'm glad whatever was ironed out in the process and whatever you're doing with Alex or Alexis?
Alexis.
Alexis is moving in a direction of coming together. And I have so much honor for the burnout and the time, that what it takes for you to lead and be a leader of your own group is just honorable. So thank you for that. I look forward to hearing what you come up with through the IBN process, and I hope that we can honor it. I also want to put into context that this is really the beginning of a mini-large scale in each of your sub, your teachers are well-informed about enrollment concerns, healthcare costs, inflation, housing, you know, it's all such real moving pieces, right? And, and so I also want to thank you for working with the state, because who are we dependent upon? The line around the budget is at the state level, and any help we can continue to get to advocate for state support of increased fund- to advocate for state support of increased funding for our, our teachers and our entire staff, our schools, to support efficiencies as we have to move in some elements of repurposing, that we will do it with love and care, and hopefully with a strong state legislature. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
One more question?
Oh, yes.
Sorry. Talking about workload manageability and time in meetings, with the meetings and taking up that time, one, for those who've been around, has it gotten progressively worse? Is something that wasn't an issue five years ago, 10 years ago? And two, any thoughts on root cause? Is it PD? Is it administrative? Is it behavioral? Is it nickel-and-diming? Just a lot of little things? Let us know a little bit more about what eats into the time with those meetings.
Right. I would say, I definitely feel like it's been, it's gotten worse. I, I've started teaching in 2011, and you had one, you know, you'd have one meeting after school, maybe a week. I had a, just for an example of some workload, so I, last week, I think I had an IEP meeting before school, I had a 504 after school, I had another IEP school, IEP meeting the next morning, and so, and that was all like, I mean, it's not extra in that, but like, that's a 3 o'clock meeting, that's a 3:00 to 3:30. IEP meetings will start at like a 7:15, 7:30, depending on your campus, even 7.
With the family?
With the family, right? And so we're, and we're working to accommodate everyone's schedules. And, and so there's that professional development, there's definitely, we didn't add, like, when it comes to evaluations and things, there's a lot of data that we're actually gonna push through the Danielson Committee on, or Task Force on that. But that comes with extra, you know, extra responsibilities and things like that. And even looking at like an, like an IEP situation, that, you know, those were times when, you know, I remember we would have like an initial IEP and then a check-in, and now that process has just grown quite a bit. Expectation is every teacher's at every meeting, is most campuses, as far as like the teachers that teach that kid. Whereas like I teach speech and debate, so usually it would be like an English teacher or a math teacher. It's more of a, hey, let's get the whole team here to show people we care, and obviously we do. But those are the sorts of things that start to, start to pile. Our fundamentals training, we had 20 fundamentals trainings to complete by the end of the first quarter, and there's follow-up with that. We just got an email from district administrators, to site administrators, saying, you know, hey, make sure that's done by October. But that 20 hours is, is hours upon hours, and we don't have time in our contracted hours to do those fundamentals. So it is expected that you do those on your own time. Some campuses give you time at the beginning of the school year to do that. We also had other campuses that had practically 30, 30 hours of meetings the week before school. Well, if I have 30 hours the week before school, when am I supposed to get my fundamentals done? Also, if the school down the street has five hours of teacher work time, and I have five hours of meetings, so there's a little bit of like, hey, can we get some more consistency across the board? And then there's just some, and there's some systemic societal professional things that have grown. I think just the interest in what's required, what's required from the state, what's required from federal, and then what's required from district, and of the things that are required from district and not above, what can we really start to peel back so that people feel more valued and respected?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate the forward interests that you brought forward and the supportive data. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Scottsdale District Administrators Association. This is the newest association that the governing board approved last year. Welcome to the table.
Hi, guys. These fancy microphones.
You get to take them home with you.
Huh?
You get to take it home with you.
Oh, okay, it's our parting gift, thank you. We'll gild it, make it gold, and be very proud of it. Governing Board President, Dr. Lewis, Governing Board, Dr. Menzel, Gladys, everyone at the table, thank you for having us here. We are the Scottsdale District Administrators Association. We are very new. We are small. We will be very mighty one day, and we are here, new to the IBN process. So we want to thank our fellow associations here, because they're helping us along the way. And please know that although we may come with a few different interests, we are here to support each other and be unified in all of our interests. Who is SDAA? The Scottsdale District Administrators Association represents approximately 60-plus, non-site-based administrators across SUSD, including department directors, coordinators, supervisors, and various other administrators. Our members play a vital role in ensuring the district runs smoothly by supporting schools, staff, students, and families in countless ways behind the scenes. From overseeing critical operations to driving innovation, SDAA members are deeply committed to the success of Scottsdale Unified and proud to contribute to the district's tradition of excellence. As we move into our interest of our association, know that we did put out a survey. We had a small response of about seven people, which is about, you know, it's a fairly decent, a high percentage of our, of our, of our people that could be members. We are not the Teachers Association, we do not, SEA, we do not have as many members, but we did get some good feedback. And with that, we focused a little bit more on kind of the fiscal management responsibilities that might need to be taken to make some of the other asks of our association a reality and even a dream of ours. So first, we want to talk about school repurposing decisions. We recognize that the challenging realities facing our, of the challenging realities facing our district, and ask that the governing board make the thoughtful, though difficult, decisions necessary regarding school repurposing. Taking action in this area represents good stewardship of our limited resources and demonstrates a willingness to face difficult issues rather than delaying them for future boards or administrations. Responsible school repurposing allows for us to focus resources where they have the greatest impact, ensuring that students, staff, and families benefit from stronger programs, better facilities, and sustainable staffing. Should the governing board make the decision in this area, we could see a path of a future where staff are able to receive competitively compensated packages for the hard work and dedication they show for our students and community. With Arizona's K-12 funding ranked near the bottom nationally, we must make the tough, responsible choices to ensure the long-term financial health of our district. These tough decisions are not only necessary, but are also just plain responsible management. The governing board plays a critical role in this work by setting priorities, making difficult but necessary decisions, and modeling fiscal responsibility for the entire district and community. Our members are committed to supporting solutions that prioritize sustainability, staff retention, and student success across all employee groups. We also support the request of the SEA to clearly define any language as it relates to staff movement, should there be repurposing happening, and to create board policies that are consistent, transparent, and fair as it relates to staff. And with that, I'm gonna pass it on to Brooke Phillips. I guess I should have introduced ourselves. I'm Patty Bilbury. I am the president of the SDAA and Director of Nutrition Services. We have Brooke Phillips, who is our treasurer for SDAA and our operations manager over finance, so she's a good treasurer from Nutrition Services, and our secretary, as you know her, Ms. Michelle Irvin, who is our coordinator of Fine Arts and Physical Education. So Brooke, take it away.
Well, the first, yeah, the first thing I want to say is, thank you to the SEA. Holy smokes, that was a great presentation, and I feel like, this is my first time here, I'm brand-spanking-new, and I learned so much, I'm really excited about this. That's, it was great, so thank you. I want to say that our second ask is that we look forward to the completion and sharing of the compensation study, as it will provide essential data to guide fair, competitive, and sustainable compensation practices across the district. This study is an opportunity to ensure our salaries align with market standards, address compression issues, and recognize the experience, education, and responsibilities of our members. Transparency in both the process and outcome of the compensation study is critical to build trust and confidence among staff, and to reinforce that the district values the contributions of all employee groups. Our third ask is pertinent to benefits. Raising insurance costs continues to be a growing concern for our members and their families. We ask that the governing board and district leadership prioritize reviewing and addressing these costs as part of total compensation, so that benefits remain accessible and affordable for all of our employees. We ask that the governing board consider that there may be budget-neutral benefits that could serve as highly desirable incentives and enhance SUSD's reputation as an employer of choice. In times when compensation increases may be marginal, introducing creative ideas that strengthen climate and culture can go a long way toward making employees feel valued and appreciated during difficult financial circumstances. We ask that the district and governing board be innovative and forward-thinking in identifying these kinds of benefits as part of a comprehensive staff retention and engagement strategy.
So I want to take a, you want to also commend the SEA for that? I was a classroom teacher for 28 years, and it's really great to have those kind of things presented and brought on the table. It's very important. Kind of our fourth ask is that we be looked at as a equitable part of the four associations. We are new, we were unrepresentative, so I very much appreciate that we were added as an association and part of the group. We also want to say, I'm just bringing in the closing statements, as we deliberate our fiscal priorities, it's imperative that we exercise prudent stewardship of resources while steadfastly preserving the core elements that distinguish Scottsdale Unified as a premier educational district. Our exceptional educators, administrators both district and site, innovative programs, and unwavering commitment to student achievement are pillars of our success. I bring this because I love SUSD, I started my career, I will end my career, so it's incredible district, so. By thoughtfully balancing fiscal responsibility with these foundational strengths, we not only safeguard our legacy, but also empower every student to reach their fullest potential. Together, let us ensure Scottsdale Unified continues to set the standard of excellence for years to come, because we are the best school district in Arizona.
So we were short and to the point.
You ready for questions?
Yes.
Great, all right. Board members. Dr., Mr. Sharkey?
Thank you very much for those comments. It's really good to hear from you firsthand. On the benefits, absolutely hear you. I'm on the trust committee, and so I kind of hear firsthand what we're doing with the healthcare and trying to find more affordable solutions there. I want to zoom in on a comment you made about budget-neutral benefits. I love hearing that, you know, from a leadership standpoint, sometimes it's sort of platitudes, like they'll throw in something that has no real value, and it's seen, you know, kind of negatively, but if there are things, and this goes for all the associations, if there are things that are benefits, that are, you know, zero cost, that you know have an impact on either your association or the body as a whole, please bring those forward, because, you know, we collectively don't always know those things, and especially from your positions, you know, if we might be thinking with a teacher's hat on, because it's the largest association, and not with your hats on, to bring forward those budget-neutral benefits that can be something that is beneficial for all, please share, because we could absolutely add those in, so thank you for bringing that up.
I think the budget-neutral benefits, what needs to be understood is that oftentimes, just giving that change to culture and climate, not that we have a bad one, but that there can be additional supports given, that don't really cost a lot of money, goes a long way with somebody, because they feel like, at least they have my back. While we may not be able to receive the compensation we want right now, they're still thinking of ways to make it better for here and wanting me to stay at Scottsdale Unified. That's really important. It's what we, you know, I think, see as opportunities, whether we're able to give great compensation packets or not, those are also things we could always be incorporating to make it better for our employees, which makes it, doesn't it just make it better for our students altogether?
And what I would say is, if things like that aren't put on the table, don't assume malice, assume we just don't know.
Right.
Please share, because it's always a good point, so thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so grateful that you've become a body, and you're small for a reason. We're skinny in management, administration. We have cut to the bone, maybe to the marrow in that area, and I know that often there's a feeling of, we're expendable, when in fact you cover hundreds and millions of dollars worth of services to our entire district on the backs of one or two sole individuals. And the span of control relative to the size of Scottsdale surprises me at how much you handle. So thank you for all that you handle, and know that you're appreciated. I also would like to encourage you to continue to advocate for the federal dollars and the state dollars that we need, that are a backbone to many of the services we provide. So keep communicating with us on ways that we can advocate for those added dollars to public schools with our state legislature and our, our federal friends on Capitol Hill. And thank you for acknowledging the, and encouraging us to be brave regarding the difficult stewardship we have regarding repurposing. None of these conversations will be easy, and as you said, if everybody, we have each other's backs, we have each other's backs, we have each other's backs, we're in this together, and we're gonna work on squeezing more juice out of this.
It's funny you mention being brave. Today we got friendship bracelets at our leadership meeting at our extended cabinet, and we had to talk about what our word was on it, mine was brave.
Well, there you go.
And I said, sometimes we have to make really difficult decisions in the face of adversity that aren't always gonna be a lasting negative impact. They may bring about a positive change in the future, and that's how we have to look at this right now.
Yeah.
There are some tough decisions ahead of us, but if we work together, we can make the right decision, so therefore we can move forward, instead of years of always kind of chasing, being reactive. Let's be proactive and figure out a way to move us to where we all want to be. We all want to see better compensation. We all want to see our students excelling the best we, our staff as happy as we can be, and it's gonna take some tough decisions to get there.
And advocacy.
Yes, advocacy.
Thank you.
You know I'm an advocate, right?
Thank you.
I'd like to say two things. The first is, Scottsdale is not unique in having to face these decisions. You've all heard about it in the, in the area, in the valley here, but also, I'm from Wyoming, and they just made the decision to close seven schools in my hometown. It's, it's everywhere.
It's nationwide.
Yes, and then the last thing is, I'm hopeful that even though this is a discussion that's very, very difficult to have, I'm hopeful because it's a smart discussion to have, and being, considering the business aspect of it, is showing interest in doing what's right for all of our students and for all of our staff, because if we're not good stewards of our finances, and because we are hesitant to close a school, that's, that's not in everyone's best interest, it's definitely not. And so I appreciate, I'm hopeful that these conversations are leading in the right direction for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. Next up, the Scottsdale Support Professional Association. I think we have Krista, Julie, and Victor.
It's on, yeah. Good evening, President Dr., can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm short. Good evening, President Dr. Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, members of the board, Dr. Menzel, Ms. Wagner. We are the 2526 Scottsdale Support Professional Leadership Team. As you know, last year, I was by myself, so it was a little difficult. So, this year, we have decided to take on a leadership team, so we all share the load equally. And we are Victor Bobbitt, he is the Art Director in Graphic Design, and he's at the district office. I am Krista Demetruius, Career and Technical Education Programs and Study Coordinator at the MDA. And Julie Gilderleve, our Pueblo Elementary Library Resource Specialist. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board and share the interest of our SUSD classified employees. classified employees. Classified employees are truly the backbone of the school district. We are oftentimes the first ones to see our students in the morning and the last ones to see them home at the end of the day. Some of us serve in highly visible roles and others work diligently behind the scenes. Regardless of our position, we each contribute in essential ways to the success of our schools and the support of our students. These are the members of the, the employees of the SSPA we're here to represent and advocate for. We are over 1,100 staff members who represent nine career families as outlined by the NEA. Clerical service workers, custodial and maintenance workers, food service workers, health and student service workers, paraeducators, security, skilled trades, technical service workers, and transportation service workers. I just want to read a little blurb. Our team includes athletic equipment coordinators, childcare providers, clerical staff, and communications professionals. We are committed community specialists, building service staff, groundskeepers, and health assistants. Our library resource specialists, material handlers, nutrition service workers, and paraeducators play crucial roles alongside our school aides, security officers, and transition specialists who work tirelessly to keep students safe and focused on learning. We also recognize our skilled trade workers, our carpenters, our painters, our electricians, our plumbers. Informational technology team and transportation staff that includes drivers and dispatchers and mechanics. Together, our efforts ensure the success of SUSD. With that, I will pass that on to Victor.
What is the SSPA? The Scottsdale Support Professionals Association represents education support professionals within the Scottsdale Unified School District in partnership with the Arizona Education Association. SSPA upholds the shared mission of supporting quality public education and ensuring that every education support professional is recognized as a vital partner in student learning. Some of our background is ESPs are essential to the daily success of schools from classroom aides, bus drivers, and nutrition staff to office administrators, custodians, and health aides. ESPs directly influence the learning environment and contribute to student achievement and well-being. SSPA is committed to advancing the professional, economic, and working conditions of its members while ensuring Scottsdale students receive the highest quality education possible. Together with AEA, the association promotes fairness, equity, and respect for all who learn and work in public education. Along with our core values in alignment with AEA is guided by the following principles: Quality public education for all; fairness, equity, and respect for all; teaching as an esteemed profession; education support professionals as valued partners; learning as a community commitment. This quarter, the SSPA has been actively engaged in celebrating, recognizing, and educating classified employees about their rights while also ensuring they have a strong and valued voice. On behalf of SSPA and Arizona Education Association, we were proud to host appreciation lunches for our classified employees to thank them for their hard work in getting the school year off to a great start. The events are our way of saying thank you and recognizing the vital role classified employees play in supporting our schools every day. Attendees also have the opportunity to learn more about how SSPA and AEA support education professionals. The following locations have already had or have scheduled their luncheon: Apache, Copper Ridge, Echo Canyon, the Ed Center, Keyva, MDA, Oak, Pima, Pueblo, Tavon, and IT at the warehouse. As part of the lunches, copies of the Classified Employment Agreement were made available to ensure all classified employees are informed about their rights, benefits, and resources that guide their work. There was an SSPA Classified Staff Bargaining Survey that we put out on September 17th and the survey asked various questions regarding employment details, wages and benefits, professional growth and development, working conditions, information about SSPA and AEA. In addition, open-ended questions were provided to allow each classified employee to share their perspectives on how things are going. The survey has successfully provided the SSPA with a clear understanding of the priorities and interests of our classified employees. In conclusion, the SSPA is dedicated to advocating for its members, enhancing the educational environment for students, and working in partnership with families, educators, and the community to strengthen Scottsdale Unified School District.
SUSD Classified Employee Interests. One, higher wages and lower insurance costs remain the top priorities for all classified employees. We want to keep wages at the forefront of your minds. With the upcoming 35 cent minimum wage increase, SUSD must remain competitive in order to attract and retain dedicated employees. Our recent survey results show that 40% of our employees have been with SUSD between brand-new to four years, a sign of high turnover. The other 60% have worked five or more, five to over 15 years, with 23% in the 15-plus-year group, and these long-serving employees deserve to be compensated for their years of loyalty, dedication, and experience. It is also important to consider the cost of living. The living wage in Maricopa County for a single adult is $25.73 per hour, yet most of our classified employees begin below this threshold. There'll be a handout that you'll receive that has all that information of what the hiring guideline looks like. If SUSD is to both recruit new staff and value long-term employees, wages must remain a top priority in upcoming decisions. The combination of inflation, a minimum 1% salary increase, and rising insurance costs, even after transitioning to a lower-cost plan, ultimately resulted in a reduction in take-home pay for classified employees last year. This financial impact placed an even greater burden on employees who are already facing significant challenges. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics and the Consumer Price Index, increased 2.9% for the 12 months ending in August 2025. When compared to the limited wage adjustment provided, it is evident that compensation did not keep pace with the actual cost of living. For these reasons, it is essential that SUSD take meaningful steps to ensure that classified employees are compensated fairly and equitably. Two, paid time off, also known as PTO. And Employee Well-Being Policy Interests. PTO accrual and equity. The current structure is not equal at this time. Employees on a nine or nine-plus-three calendar accrue PTO of 9%. Employees on the 10 or 10-plus-five-month calendar accrue PTO of 13%. Employees on the 11 or 12-month calendar accrue PTO at 12%. So the proposal is standardized PTO accrue across all work calendars at 13%. At minimum, adjust the nine and nine-plus-three-month groups to 12% to reduce disparity. Holiday break and holiday and pay and break pay. Many of the employees will not take time off and accrue lots of time. Permit the use of accrued leave for unpaid district closures. Allow up to 40 hours of accrued leave per school year for this purpose. PTO flexibility. Remove restrictions on the use of general leave for classified employees. Implement annual rollover of unused PTO balances. Eliminate use-it-or-lose-it policies to ensure PTO remains a consistent and reliable benefit. PTO cash-out options. Offer an optional year-end cash-out of unused PTO balances with the option of quarterly or biannually payouts. Ensure equal payouts percentages across all employee groups, administrative certified and classified. Ensure update to the Classified Employee Agreement to reflect board-approved changes from last year. Currently, it states 30% payout is currently stated in the 2025 agreement. The board approved 50% for all employee groups in the prior year. Equity enhancements, we're still on PTO. Align holiday and leave benefits for classified employees with those offered to certified staff. Clearly communicate PTO policies and accrue structures during employee orientations and onboarding. Provide additional PT, provide additional hours for classified employees to complete fundamental trainings, which you've already heard about earlier. Identify and provide qualified substitutes for para-professionals, LRS staff, and bus drivers, and other roles that work directly with students to ensure continuity of services and consistently meet student needs. Support classified employees in using PTO without fear of guilt or retaliation. Employee well-being initiative. Design mental health recharge days as part of a PTO benefit. Provide paid leave opportunities to participate in SSPA or other community service opportunities. Summary of the PTO. Adopting these revisions will improve equity and consistency in leave benefits across work calendar groups. Enhance flexibility and retention by allowing employees greater control over PTO use. Support employee well-being through dedicated time for mental health and community service. Improve fairness, morale, and retention while ensuring consistent, transparent, and equitable treatment of all employees. Interest number three. Training and professional development. Many report to, report little to no training, especially for new hires or specialized roles. Request for relevant job-specific PDs, which is professional development. Opportunities that are meaningful and, oh, wrong place, sorry, back up. Request for relevant job-specific PDs and ongoing mentorship programs. Expanding the mentor program to include classified employees would leverage their talent and experience to mentor and train new staff. Selected mentors could receive a stipend in recognition of their time and expertise they contribute. In addition, classified employees should be engaged in the design and delivery of professional development opportunities that are meaningful and directly relevant to their job responsibilities. These initiatives would foster greater respect and empowerment within the job families while also supporting stronger onboarding, growth, and retention across the organization. Interest four. Job description and role clarity. Complaints about outdated and inaccurate job descriptions. Staff performing duties beyond their scope without compensation. At the bottom of a classified contract, it will say duties as assigned. Classified employees are sometimes reassigned from their primary roles, such as a library resource specialist, to cover AM/PM duties or lunch recess supervision. While students remain, while students' safety remains a priority, these reassignments can limit staff's effectiveness and their core responsibilities. We suggest exploring alternative coverage models, such as establishing a rotating support pool, to ensure student needs are met without disrupting designated roles. Additionally, we recommend developing clear guidelines that define when and how classified employees may be temporarily assigned duties outside of their paid position. Conclusion for you. Classified employees are the committed and dedicated backbone of SUSD team. Each one plays a vital role in the success of our schools and the support of our students. These are the employees the SSPA proudly represents and advocates for. Every employee deserves respect, a voice, and to feel like a valued member of an extraordinary organization. Together, we can make this a reality. On a personal note, I consider myself fortunate to be part of the Pueblo family, where communication, support, and mutual respect are present every day. I'm especially grateful for the way Shelley Hummon and Emma Miranda Treat Me are AP. With kindness, dignity, and professionalism, I only wish that all classified employees across SUSD could experience the same level of respect and support that I do. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. What a beautiful and comprehensive presentation and your four priorities were quite clear. Board members. Thank you so very, very much. I'm really proud of the leadership you've been able to, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay.
It's all right.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all that. I'm a big fan of the classified employees as they've benefited my own children over and over and over again. So when you were speaking about the professional development, I would like, could you give us an example of what does current professional development look like for your employees?
Well, it has been, in the past, the new updates, like when we're talking about visions, EPARS, EPAR training, how to do inter-purchase orders, anything like requisitions, things like that, those have been the professional developments that we get. Sometimes it doesn't apply to us, so it's really not necessary, so it does seem like we could have a little bit more relevant professional development. I know, you know, a lot of us, especially the administrative staff, they use Excel and Word and Canva and things like that, so having professional development trainings on those platforms might benefit a lot of our employees. So having something like that brought to the table would help us in our job roles on a day-to-day basis.
As a library resource specialist, a lot of times we will have meetings put together. Unfortunately, those meetings turn into a sales pitch. It's usually some vendor that already has, that's already in our systems and they want to come and talk about what's new and some of us don't even use these products. So it would really be nice to have LRSs involved in that decision-making. Like Krista said, there's lots of things that we do that would really be relevant in us, for us to improve our jobs.
Thank you. Do you have something else?
I guess one thing I could add is sometimes when new forms are being presented, it, we don't, the people that, the end users, aren't involved in the process, so, you know, it could be that they didn't think of certain things. So like if you're working at a site and something, you know something on a daily basis happens and the form doesn't, isn't really conducive to a good, you know, work environment, like you just kind of get it wrong or there's some kind of a glitch, it makes it difficult. So sometimes if you are, if we're updating- So sometimes if you are if we're updating forms or any templates, maybe contacting or inviting the end user to be part of that change would would benefit us too.
Okay, thank you.
Also want to thank you. The diversity of roles that you have to represent is is just breathtaking. So thank you for doing your best to synthesize it all together. I thought I knew what nine plus three was when you were talking about accrued PTO because it equals twelve, but then you did ten plus four and I kind of ran out of months in the year.
Oh, okay.
So what is, in the spirit of asking as a newbie, what is ten?
Let me help.
Thank you.
Let me, yeah, let me go back to my numbers so I can know exactly what I'm saying as well. So there's different work calendars that are in SUSD and they represent different time, different times. So there's a work calendar for nine month employees. There's a work calendar for nine months and three days. There's a work calendar for ten month employees. There's, hang in there, and then there's a work calendar for ten months and five days. And there's a work calendar for eleven days and when I was on I or eleven months, eleven days, that would be interesting. Eleven months, and I don't know if we still have that eleven month employee anymore, but we had like one person on there a few years ago. And then there's a twelve month calendar. So as you can see, there's lots of different calendars within our district. Some are first day of students return to last day of students leave. And for LRSs, we came to the bargaining table and we worked for ten month employee to become ten month because we have a lot of work before the beginning of the school year. So we were able to make that change. So, yeah, there's, there's a lot.
Thank you.
Dr. Lewis, I'll just add on to that very lovely explanation of work calendars. All of those work calendars come to the governing board for approval each year. So we actually have our FY twenty seven work calendars almost done and will come to the board for approval in November.
And those work calendars are associated with roles, not necessarily individuals?
That is correct.
Okay.
So be on the lookout for those.
Thank you.
Ms. Warner?
Thank you. So thank you for sharing. It's very insightful and I love the transparency and being able to hear from all of you, things that we've heard bits and pieces from staff over the last three years. But when you talk about professional development, and I heard it with the SCA as well, is you want it personalized to something that you can use that is of your interest and some of us are subject. And I think that is so important because there's no point in spending time in a professional development or something you have no interest in and it's not going to translate into your work. And so I think it's something that we seriously have to take a look at. So thank you for sharing and making it so clear. So thank you.
Yeah, I think your your four interests were very clear for us. Thank you for that and congratulations on developing a leadership team bigger than you being by yourself with all those diversities. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. We do have, and unfortunately probably didn't make enough, but we have seven copies of our presentation that we just gave to you. If you don't get one and you would like one, please just email me at GJ Gildersleeve and I'll help you from there.
Thank you. We'll give them to Gladys and she could get them to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Last but not least, Scottsdale Administrators Association, Dr. Dansky and Principal Hummond.
Good evening, Governing Board President, Dr. Lu- Dr. Lewis, Vice President Sharkey, Governing Board Members, Dr. Menzel and Gladys, Dr. Dansky, Dr. Hummond, and we get the pleasure of wrapping up and attempting to synthesize everything that's been stated tonight. So we'll do our best. Like the other associations, we also share concerns about compensation and benefits and that looms large on our minds. And we want to frame our conversation tonight by just recognizing that for you as the board, it's going to be a difficult few months ahead with the conversations around school repurposing. And those are never popular conversations for a board to consider and they're difficult ones. But we do ask that the board brings the district into financial health so that we can afford increased compensation and to address rising cost of insurance for our members in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Dansky. I'm Shelley Hummond. Thank you for having us this evening. So we have listened and surveyed our members. We do represent all site administrators, that would be assistant principals and principals. We did survey all assistant principals and principals regardless of membership. However, it should be noted that who filled out the survey were thirty-four percent of all of those people and ninety-nine percent of people that filled out the survey were indeed members of our association. So we were, as Dr. Dansky mentioned, we had the task of not only synthesizing our areas, but Dr. Dansky's been very busy tonight putting her doctorate to use by synthesizing in real time all of the interests of all groups. So she will present that at the end, what we assess is is common interest that we have. But if you want to start it out with the interest in equity.
Yeah, so we have four key areas that we grouped our members' interests under. Fairness and equity, working conditions, which is where the bulk of our work at IBN will be this year, recognizing that we don't have money to address compensation and benefits. We do want to still touch briefly on recruitment and retention in that conversation as well. So in the interest of fairness and equity, we want to make sure that the board understands that jobs for administrators are posted in January. And we do have administrators that may need to be looking due to the conversation around repurposing and we ask that the board do that by December in fairness to those members who will need to be timely with those applications and thinking about their next steps. Along those lines, we note in our agreement that we need to clean up some language to make processes more clear and ensure fairness for all of our members. We have some language around lateral transfers, reduction in force and mergers that don't quite align in a clear way. For example, we have some language around in a merger, two principals would serve over that building without an assistant principal, but it doesn't detail in year two what happens to those two principals. And so those are things that we need to clean up this year. We also are looking at, on page twenty-five talks about salary review every four years. You can have your salary reviewed, but that doesn't really transpire in any additional compensation, so we're just going to remove that.
So as Dr. Dansky mentioned, we decided as a group that what we were really going to hit on bringing you tonight, and truly this is kind of the raw data. So as Dr. Menzel mentioned at the beginning, there we did, we have, I've been on the IBN process, I believe, for three or four years now. And we are constantly given reminders and professional development, as it were, as to what is an interest versus a position. And so having been serving for as long as I have, I would hope I would know what the difference between an interest and a position is, although sometimes it can get a little bit murky. But we did not really go into great detail with our membership. So what we're bringing you tonight are many of the raw thoughts on working conditions. And we decided, Dr. Dansky and I decided that we wanted to bring these to you because to the points of what has been said tonight, we do believe that we can arrive at some very organic, no cost, creative solutions that would improve working conditions for site administrators. And that's where we believe we can kind of get more bang for our buck in terms of the IBN process this year. So wanted to start with under the topic of workload and time expectations. So there was a lot of commentary about the unsustainable expectation of site administrators feeling that we work well in advance of the forty hour work week. Most people were stating that they're working fifty to sixty hours and feeling that we are on call twenty-four seven. We, on our parts for the SAA leadership, have come up with what we think are maybe some creative ideas for professional development that could try to help some of our young and newer administrators maybe strike that work life balance. One solution or one interest that came up quite a bit was to consider allowing administrators at the site to look at alternative workplaces or reinstating fall break as an actual break and not having to take our paid time off for that. And then flexibility for remote days, especially on days when students are not present in our building, like in the summertime. Recognizing and honoring the personal sacrifices of administrators that what they make for their school community and hopefully focusing retention efforts on trust, respect, and stability in those roles. Under the concept of respect, transparency, and trust, we as the Scottsdale Administrators Association would like a continued cultivation of a culture of transparency, empathy, and mutual respect between leadership staff and school communities, and recognition of the leadership roles and the professional and personal impact of district decisions as they have on us and our school communities. Under the topic of leadership structure and support, there was a lot of conversation mostly amongst our assistant principals about balanced leadership opportunities and balanced leadership responsibilities, especially at the site. As well as as an association, we want to make sure that we are always promoting the effort to grow our leaders from our teaching ranks all the way up through our assistant principal ranks into future building leaders and ensuring that things such as our assistant principal meetings are structured and aligned such that it provides that district, that leadership development for our people to move on, move up. Under facilities and resources, because this is such an impact to both our, to all staff and also to students, we want to make sure that we're prioritizing critical building needs such as plumbing, AC, general maintenance, and developing contingency plans if something does not work. And finally, I would be remiss in not stating the difficulty of representing the interests of a large and varied group of exceptional building leaders for the future health of our profession and our organization, but also recognizing that we do have colleagues as well as other staff members from the represented groups tonight that could be facing the possibility of not retaining a position here in SUSD, given the conversations that have taken place that are taking place now in our immediate future on full and thriving schools. But our, some of our members want to make sure that our agreement and policies contain clear processes and potential protections for administrators who might be facing repurposing or closures, and to consider retirement incentives or leave buyout plans to honor the loyalty and provide fair transitions. I do want to take a second for my last part to thank our colleagues, to thank the other members of the association, the heads of the association as well. And I look forward to listening to our last area that Dr. Dansky is going to provide as well as the synthesis on all of our interests.
Recognizing that there are not funds to address our concerns around recruitment and retention, we still want to put several things forward so that you can keep these in your mind as future items that we would like to see addressed. And we feel it's important, what I've heard from all groups tonight is raise increases that keep up with the cost of living, but that also keep us competitive with area districts so that we can continue to hire and retain the best candidates that we can. Increased cost of benefits is is a huge concern and we do have members taking homeless money this year, even with the one percent raise like the other associations. We do ask that the board take action on the compensation study that was completed so that all of our administrator groups are being paid equitably with the market share and also consideration for addressing performance pay and longevity pay that mirrors the other employee groups. Those are our things that we we receive less performance pay and we don't have longevity pay currently, but would like that to be considered in the future. What I hear tonight, you know, are things that that we all value. We want to be compensated fairly. We want to be able to take care of ourselves, our health, our family's health. We want to be safe at work. We want to have a manageable workload so that we're not burning the candle at both ends. And I I think, you know, what what certainly when we sit down to the together as associations to have a conversation is just that we're here in support of each other. And we do want to collaborate to ensure that our employee groups get their needs met. So thank you for listening and we'll open ourselves to questions.
Governing Board, Mr. Sharkey?
So first of all, Principal Hummond, thank you very much for hosting me the other week. It was wonderful to see Pueblo and what you guys have there, so I really appreciate the visit. This is a little bit for all the groups, but since you're here. The, on the benefits, healthcare costs and salaries, I see the articles too about where Arizona stands. I just paid my homeowner's taxes and I wish it was two or three times what I pay if it, you know, went to our schools. So I don't think there's anyone who's unaware of that. As we look at, like I'm getting from this, you know, is how to get blood from a turnip kind of thing, like it's not like there's hidden money that we're keeping aside and not sharing. From your side, is the the boots on the ground and the people really see what's going on, again, this is for really all of the associations, are there venues for sharing, like, hey, Shannon or superintendent, if we did this, we could, you know, not spend on this piece of software, not spend on this expenditure and that could go. Are there avenues for two-way conversations on that that could help say, hey, that's a good thought, you know, if we change this process, change this plan, there will be more money and we would happily, you know, have that available for salaries or benefits? Is there a venue for that or do you feel there's a sort of separation that the money is sort of separated and you don't have visibility to it?
I think there's a venue for feedback. We meet monthly with Dr. Menzel. You know, no one's ever turned us down for a conversation to provide input and we are seeing choices being made. For example, Hootsuite will not be renewed and that's a fifty thousand dollar cost savings. And we know that our district leadership is making those difficult decisions piece by piece to start to save us money.
Yeah, and I want to add on to that, that we have in the past traditionally met with other directors as well that have wanted to meet with SAA leadership. And then also, Ms. Crozier is also part of our our IBN process. So when Scottsdale Administrators Association is in our IBN process with district, we, she is part of that team, so we are able to have those conversations about, you know, what what cost savings would be for a variety of different variables.
Thank you for that. It's helpful to me to understand kind of the relationship between the associations and the dollar side of things, so thank you.
Dr. Potenski?
Thank you for your presentation and obviously we love all of our associations equally, as my mother said about me and my three brothers, not associations, but children. At the same time, site leaders, I mean, you really are at the center of everything, you know, at the intersection of teachers, staff. I mean, it's fitting that you are in some way the summation of of the process, so thank you. This is also a little bit of a question for everybody, but I'll ask it of you. I'm struck that we do this every year and I understand the uncertainty year to year of what our resources are going to be. At the same time, it would seem like some of these interests ultimately can best be addressed over kind of multi-year frameworks and kind of moving in directions as opposed to Groundhog's Day every year. And so I guess my question is, could you respond to that? You know, how do we make multi-year progress and at the same time kind of start each year with sort of the same set of interests? I don't know where to direct this question. Are there models where interest-based negotiation is done on a multi-year framework?
So in other states, the answer is yes. I'm checking with Jennifer McLennan to see what the Arizona parameters are. There is a concern about the financial side and I've seen in other states where you might have a multi-year agreement on the language and an opener every year on the financial components. But I'm going to ask Jennifer to answer the question with respect to what statutory provisions allow or don't allow in Arizona.
And thank you, Dr. Menzel, for the question. So there is no statutory provision that discusses the length of time for a specific bargaining agreement. bargaining agreement or an MOU. There is nothing in statute that either requires you to bargain with your associations. It's through case law. There is a restriction, I would say, with respect to offering multi-year contracts. So, you certainly could make multi-year agreements projected out regarding things like working conditions, but when you're talking about the finances, you're limited by statute with the exception of the superintendent's contract. And then, there is a provision to allow multi-year contracts for certificated staff, but it's not widely used.
Thank you.
Two years for principals.
I've worked in a district that had multi-year agreements.
Thank you.
Other questions from board members? All right, well, I just want to say thank you for synthesizing and seeing the alignment as you really are the nexus of all of us together. And while you came up one by one as four separate groups, I see it as one family. And I really hope and can speak certainly on behalf of, you know, of the board, that it, it would be my hope that we would have a clear vision of supporting all employees and not in any way fragment you or have you come to the table fragmenting yourselves. So, thank you for that synthesis. When was the last time your performance pay was increased? Do you remember?
Performance pay for us is newer.
Nope, you don't know yet?
No, it's been the same.
For how long? Like since?
Normally, how to continue their super-classes.
Okay, so that helps me. And we don't have a cost of living assigned to that or, okay. And with the intensity of your hours, and I would say 60 hours a week is probably the norm and it's probably above that when I think about the nights and the zero hours and the weekends and the early morning calls of, I can't make it and I couldn't reach the subservices, blah, blah, blah. I just think about your cost of living, the education you put into yourselves, what it costs you to get your doctorates, the responsibility and intensity of your roles. I just want you to know how much I appreciate the research that talks about principals being the quintessential difference-maker site by site for student achievement. And I have a question that we're not agendized for, but I want to speak to it in terms of overall, and Dr. Cruz, you may want to just think about this, is as we think about repurposing and fears associated with job security, I, I just have a belief deep in my heart with the graying and greening of our leadership, is a phrase I use, that we would have a healthy, normal attrition. And I don't want people to feel that, but my assumption may be Pollyanna right now and hopeful and we'll do everything we can to be as human and reasonable as possible. Thank you very, very much. Yes, did I hear, oh, sorry. I was looking for a, yes.
You have to add the late-night games too and the rain.
And the late-night games, yes.
Just for the record, what is your performance pay top?
It's $1,500. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. It was intense, intense, yeah. You have a question for Dr. Menzel?
Not for disagree.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Dr. Potenski.
We're going to go into executive session and talk through kind of our interests. What is it from your perspective, and I don't know if we're allowed to let others join in in answering it, that the interest-based negotiation process would most needs of the board in terms of kind of clarity and input, like what guidance can you give us? And I think it's important to do it in public. We can be a fickle group. We change every however many years, two years, four years. So, what, what do you think best serves the process in terms of the specificity, the clarity, whatever in this process?
I think there are a couple of things that are important and one is understanding as a collective, we work with a governing board that meets, you know, at a properly agendized meeting to make decisions on behalf of the district. Last year, it was clear that the governing board had a very strong opinion about a principal and assistant principal at every building. That was not the same as the prior board in terms of when that conversation started in the agreement. So, if there are interests of the governing board that are priority interests, those are what are really important for us to know so that when we're having a conversation with SAA and SAA and SSBA, we understand what those priority interests are. Ultimately, the recommendation's going to come forward based on the three-part review of those, but we need to know as a leadership team what those interests are. And then, we go through the process that's facilitated to come forward with the recommendation of what we hope represents our best attempt at honoring the interests of the various groups, understanding that we also have constraints so that not all interests are able to come forward as something that, that might be executable given the constraints that we have.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that brings us to closure at this point on this topic. So, thank you all so very much. That was a lot of work, a lot of preparation and a lot of alignment. Really appreciate it. Thank you. So, at this point, we're going to adjourn and do I need a motion for adjournment, please?
Can we make a motion to go into executive?
A motion to go into executive session? Thank you.
For the two purposes, yes.
I make the motion to go into executive session.
For the two purposes.
For the two purposes of, I got this. Of, I was going to say delusions, but it says discussions or consultations with designated representatives of the public body in order to consider its position and instruct its representative regarding negotiations with employee organizations regarding the parameters of interest-based negotiations and to, the governing board may recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 383, excuse me, 4311 for the purposes of discussing for superintendent's goals related to a performance-based plan and quarterly informal evaluation discussions. Do I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, I'd like to have a vote, please?
Aye.
All right, at 5:00 for to vote, go into executive session. We're going to stay in the room. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion passes. I now make a motion to adjourn. Need a second? Second. All right, all those in favor? Aye. And many thanks for a great evening. I appreciate it. Tough and great evening.